That, you know, general fund gains 265 grand. Our fund loses 265. I don't really want to go into detail.
No, I think not.
Um, I don't think we need to talk too much. Because half of them won either. Is this for me?
Yes, yeah.
I talked to... We would like to try to start this meeting. It's supposed to start at 7 o'clock. I know everyone's enjoying themselves back there. But if you don't mind, we're going to go ahead and start our meeting, too. Thank you all for coming out, though. Like to call the meeting in order. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray.
Present.
Trustee Rogers.
Present.
Trustee Suisse.
Present.
Trustee Pazmino.
Present.
Trustee Backle.
Present.
Trustee Cabrios absent. Mayor Yucich.
Present. Okay. We're going to call out who else is here. Yosa.
Hmm?
Okay. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. I'd like to respectfully request that we table item J-11.
Do we have a second? No. Uh, no, there's no second on it, so it stays on the agenda. Next would be public hearing. The regular meeting will be in recess for the purposes of conducting a public hearing. Is there a motion to open a public hearing on the Village of Homer Glen's fiscal year 2021-2022 budget?
Some move.
Trustee Rogers.
I'll second.
Trustee Backle. Okay, discussion. No discussion on it?
I think...
Yeah. I don't know. John, do you have anything to add? Because I just have, I have some concerns with regards to, out of all due respect, I respect your opinion on most everything you do. I'm concerned about doing anything that has to do with moving the motor fuel tax that we generated or created four years ago. I'd like to just keep that. I think it's nice, it's a nice source for people to look at. And I understand your theory behind it in that those funds might not be enough. But I still think it's a nice place card for people to look at. So I'd like to keep that.
Well, it's always been there, and we didn't plan on changing it. And for everyone that did read it, it's a draft. This is what we read to figure out what's best for this village and for the people that live here and the businesses that are here. So that was going to stay here in the first place. Unfortunately, someone took it the wrong way and said that we were moving it around to other places, so they were going to lose it. We're not going to lose it. I made a promise four years ago or six years ago that the motor fuel tax that we took in here was for the parks and the parks only. So with that, we can go to the next one.
No, I don't think that he was saying for it to go away. I think that it was more just, I mean, John, you can explain it. I think it's just, it's cleaner if we just leave it how it is, that's all.
No, but that's, but that's it. If you take it out of there, it looks like you took it out of there.
Right, right, right.
And we didn't take it out of it. It's been in there since we put the tax in place, and it's, it's still there now.
Could I, could I just add that, you know, the first draft had the local motor fuel tax and the park facilities costs or expenses moved to the general fund. So it wasn't just one item, it was two, which is, you know, it's kind of a net-net thing. But I know there was some concerns about that, so I put it back to where it was. So currently, the local motor fuel tax is in the park fund, as well as the Parks Facilities Department has been moved back from the general fund into the park fund. So...
So then I guess I, I'm wondering, how does that affect the SOP that we're voting on tonight? How does that affect that?
We should defer that to the next meeting because it, Fund 50, which is the Park and Recreation Fund, should be represented. The changes have to be revoked on it because I took out the maintenance and the local motor fuel tax from that SOP. So I think I could get it, I think we should do it at the next meeting. Because you're going to have to vote on the budget at the next meeting anyway, if you're okay with that.
So do we need to make any kind of adjustments to the, to the D on the agenda?
To 13, to J-13?
Well, because we would be removing it from the agenda, correct?
Well, we could wait until we come to that point in the agenda and just...
Okay, I just want to make sure on a legal aspect, because since we didn't remove it when it was time to remove it, that we didn't remove it, we can remove it later.
Remove it later.
Okay.
Okay.
As long as you remove it before you vote.
Okay.
Yes, that will be.
Mayor, the only thing I'd like to add is that I appreciate that you've worked with John and staff to get that, the motor, the local motor fuel tax straightened out. And I know we've all been given updated draft copies of the budget, and I just want to remind the staff to make sure that that gets out online as well so that those who are following along have the most up-to-date information.
Okay, that's good. Is there anyone in the public that has any comments on the budget? Do you want to come up to the podium?
One more question. Because I won't be speaking if this is being basically deferred until the next meeting for J-11.
If you could please state your name for the record, thank you.
Jennifer Consolino.
It's going to be voted on in the next meeting that we have...
There will be a second public comment. This is just for the budget hearing, so if there's a comment about another item...
Just asking about J-11.
All right, yeah.
So I can just wait till public comment, and I'll...
That's fine. Or you can come up to J-11, too.
Okay.
Is there any other that would like to make a comment on it? Steve Ballage, 12259 Derby Lane, Orland Park. It's really Homer Glen, but this is the Mail-Zip Co. I was going to talk in public comment, but my comments really address the budget. You know, we have a water transmission line that's going to be coming due somewhere between now and Christmas, right? We don't know exactly when, because I heard it got pushed up again. But the first mayor, or the second mayor, Daley, he said, he called me up screaming at me. He said that he had money put away and reserved to pay for that transmission line, and there's no more money to pay for it. So when that comes due, all the people are going to find an increase in their water bill or taxes. That's what he's saying. Now, I'm not putting words in nobody's mouth. But any kind of money that we got, we should be saving it to pay off that transmission line bill so that people don't get an increase in their water bill or a fee or something. So that's kind of what I was going to say in public comment, but it's more appropriate for the budget, that you don't spend any money until you know how much that's going to cost and where you're going to get the money to pay for, besides my pocket and everybody else's pocket. So that's my only comment, and I'd ask you to please maybe postpone it and stick it on the next board. Let them suffer through it. You know, figure it all out. But, and that's only a month away. So rather than, you know, put all this stuff out to spend, like the road and whatever else, I think you really need to save the money. Thank you. Okay? Okay. This meeting then will be called back into order. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of February 10th, 2021 Village Board meeting? Some of... Trustee Gray.
Second.
Trustee Rogers. Discussion. No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes, ayes. Motion carries. Next, is there a motion to approve the minutes of February 24th, 2021 Village Board meeting?
I some of.
Trustee Suisse.
I'll second.
Trustee Backle. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes, ayes. Motion carries. Reports and communications from the mayor and other officers. Mayor's report. There's actually a lot of things I would like to talk about on it, but we're going to have... Most of this is going to be open on each one. Probably the one thing that I would like to say is we've had a bunch of rumors going around about the Heritage Park that we spent $23 million. Actually, what we spent on it is a little under $8 million for everything that's out there right now. There, I got it right here. We have spent $7,938.35 on the park. And the $23 million something was PRI. When they came in here to give us prices on the park, they were at $23 million, and they said they could get it done within two years. There's no way they would have been able to get it done in two years. And we're not trying to get it done fast. We're trying to do it to where there's a pace where we know money's coming back in, not going out. We've never, we've never spent more than what we should have. Everything that we have done has come in under budget. So we expect that to be the same way. But the only thing that we're going to be, we'll be talking later on about it. So park-wise, if there's anyone who has a question on that, you can ask me later. But the park is at $7,900,000. So with that, we'll go back to the trustees for right now. So, Trustee Gray.
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Trustee Backle.
Thank you, Mayor. I have, I have a couple of things here to report on. There's been, as usual, a lot of misinformation on Facebook regarding the village neglecting the residents of Long Run Creek. And I want to assure everyone that I have not resigned as chairman of the Public Safety Committee. I've been in constant contact with the residents of Long Run Creek. I have over 100 texts and calls with the residents of Long Run Creek in the past two weeks alone. Cook County, as of, as of yesterday, the Cook County Building and Zoning Enforcement, they are the enforcement authority for Cook County. They've been contacted regarding Long Run Creek as the majority of the fires have started in Cook County. The Army Corps of Engineers has been contacted, Illinois IPA, Illinois DNR, LaMont Township, Metro Water Reclamation District. All of them have been in contact about the situation. And a recent text that I had sent to the residents, I'm on a group text with many residents from Long Run Creek, and I have been for a while, and I've been communicating with them. I would like to read a text that I had sent to them right after the fires, if you could just allow me that. This is a long text, but it starts, I'd like to give you all some information. Again, this is the, this is a text to the residents of Long Run Creek. The residents who were not in this text chain, I would like to speak to them on Channel 6. They can, they can hear this and know what was said. I'd like to give you all some information regarding what we have done in the recent past, what is currently being done, and what has been put in place regarding the future of Long Run Creek. First thing is the fire. When I found out about the fire, I reached out to Lieutenant Holly. We all know the situation. The squatters with the sheep in Cook County have been discussed with all of you at the public safety meetings several times over the past year. Cook County Sheriff is aware. This is not an issue that we are ignoring, but our hands are tied regarding a solution at this time. Now, remember, this was two weeks ago. Cook County sheriffs are investigating. Lieutenant Holly and the Will County Sheriff has made a report. Joe Baber has been involved and is in contact with many of you and will continue to be there for you. Currently, seven or eight Illinois agencies are involved in this investigation, including DNR and the Cook County Sheriff's Department. It's my understanding that the state's attorney's office has also been contacted. Now, as to what we've done in the past. As all of you know, I lost my election on Tuesday. However, we have made great strides together. Long Run Creek is now on the village's radar. You all have been fighting to be recognized, and you now have a voice and a presence with the village. I want you all to understand the truth here. Everything that I was able to accomplish for you, I did not do alone. When I approached Mayor Yucich with a request on your behalf, his response was always, without question, a resounding yes. Brock, give them everything they need. I'm sorry, Brock, give them whatever it is they need. And whatever I needed, I received because of Mayor Yucich, from the flyover to the $50,000 funding of Long Run Creek. Now regarding the future of Long Run Creek. This week, we won our lawsuit with the township. The Village of Homer Glen and its residents now have a public works department, and this is great news for the residents along the Long Run Creek watershed. One of the responsibilities of the public works is flood mitigation. I have asked the mayor, along with our village manager, for clarification regarding tasking the public works department to help with the Long Run Creek situation. Mayor Yucich has assured me that this will happen. As I am no longer a village trustee, I have, no longer do I have a say regarding Long Run Creek. However, I will be an advocate now, as I have always been, on your behalf. I no longer make policy, but I have seen to it that your future is better now than when I was appointed. Thank you, Brock Backle. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Brock. Yesterday, we had a very big gathering here between neighbors, Corps of Engineer. We had Michelle Mullins from the newspaper come out, so this way this could be broadcasted. I went out there last Friday, and what they have done to that property is, it's devastating. If you took a look at it, it burned your eyes because they burnt down everything. They went to clear grass, and they ended up taking down 300, 400, 500 trees. So if you went by there and saw it, you'd understand why we're trying to help them out, because first rains come, that place floods like there's no tomorrow. And if we don't help them out now, it's going to screw up the whole village. We asked Michelle to come out, so this way at least she could see it, write something in paper, so we can do something for them. Because the way it is right now, there's very little help we can do because most of it's in Cook County. Some of it's in Will County. But I would say that if anyone, if you got bored and you wanted to take a look at something that's summoned into our property and to their property, because homeowners are living with us right now, it almost burned down a few of the houses, go out and take a look. So if anyone starts complaining about how we're spending money on something, this is something that I feel is definitely needed for this village and for these people that live there. So anyone else have a comment on this? All right, and Brock, you're all set?
I am, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, Trustee Rogers.
Thank you. I just want to encourage the residents to, today we announced on our website and our Facebook page that pickleball and tennis lessons are going to be available this summer. We had them available last summer, and they did, they filled up very fast. So if this is something that you're interested in doing, I would encourage you, you need to come up to the village to sign up for that. So I would encourage you to do that, you know, fairly quickly. So, and it's a very popular event. Between now and the end of the year, we have a little over 20 events going on at Heritage Park. So I think it's important that you stay informed on the village's website and the Facebook page so that you don't miss out on any of those. We have approximately six different food truck events, two movie under the stars events. Market in the Glen, that'll be the first year that we're trying this type of market days in stargazing. There'll be two separate stargazing events. We'll still have the Homer for the holidays, hopefully. We weren't able to have it last year, but we'll have some, some type of event for that. But there's a lot. Trunk or Treat, hopefully, we'll have that. We weren't able to have that last year. That was hugely popular, so...
Chalk it up.
Chalk it up. Chalk it up, we'll have that again. We had that last year. We were able to do that socially distanced, so no matter what, we'll be able to do that. But I just want to really encourage people to make sure that you, you stay engaged on the, on the village's website and on the village's Facebook page so that you're not missing out on any of this stuff, because they are very popular events and always draw a good crowd, good family crowd. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Rogers. Trustee Suisse.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Suisse. Trustee Pazmino.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Village Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder to the trustees, if you do have a committee report, to please remember to send it to me so I can put it in for the record. For the residents, when you come up to the microphone, just a reminder, you do not need to state your address. I do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and that is it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Village Attorney?
No report.
Thank you. Public Safety officials? We all good? Okay. And last would be interim Village Manager.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank the mayor and the village board for the opportunity to serve as village manager. I'm excited about the opportunity and to kind of keep the momentum that the board and staff have developed in, over the past 20 years. And I also just want to add to Trustee Rogers' point. Staff is currently working on a program guide to mail to every resident in the village to discuss those events and programs that we're offering to the village. That'll be coming out sometime this spring.
Thank you, Matt. Tulips. That's another one. Tulips. Okay, we will go to public comment. You've got to keep it to three minutes because we have a very big meeting coming tonight. So we'll start out with Tracy Kim Snow. No problem. Thanks, Tracy. Steve, you have something to say again?
No, I'm good.
Thank you. All right. Al? I'm sorry, but I can't read it.
Yeah, sorry, I went in right. Can I ask this? I'm only here on approval for the planning commission. If there's any questions, I'll keep them right.
Okay, thank you. We'll call you up when we pull that in front of us.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer Consolino. You're on it. I don't know if you want to come back up and talk again.
No, this is regarding J-11. Good evening. I would like to extend my gratitude first and foremost to our outgoing board trustees and say thank you for your service to our community. I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Moving forward as a newly elected trustee, I look forward to working with the Village of Homer Glen in both a positive and productive manner. It is my slate's mission to promote transparency and bring the voices of our residents to our board's decisions. It is because of this mission that I would like to address tonight's agenda item regarding the proposed parking lot for Heritage Park. Current board has spent nearly $8 million to date on this park project, and this does not include expenses done in-house by Facilities Department. In January 2020, the no bid, excuse me, the no bid architect gave an estimate of another $15 million to complete the remainder of this plan. This will total the park at $23 million, not including inflation or in-house work costs. With all the spending, Heritage Park offers very little for families with young children and/or special needs. Why are these amenities being passed up again yet for another project? This project, this parking lot project and spending was not discussed openly by the board or with the public. The grant for $750,000 was not acquired until after this was decided upon. Million-dollar spending should never be spent during a lame duck session when four trustees will no longer be serving on the board after this election. There has been zero public discussion or consensus regarding this next phase of construction. If this board is awarded, the village, myself, and the incoming trustees will be obligated to comply with the contract. The cul-de-sac road is not a pressing need. My slate and I are not opposed to this idea in the future, but in the interim, there's a much less costly option for additional parking until this road is built. Newly elected Homer Township Board and Township Supervisor Stephen Ballage are willing to commit to an agreement and supply a connection path between our two existing parking lots. This was also something that was brought up by former Highway Commissioner Mike DeVivo in February of 2020. This was before COVID. This cost could be a cry for the million-dollar project and is much more practical than what the current board is about to spend. There is no reason that this cannot be tabled and voted on publicly when the newly elected board is seated in one month. It is because of these facts that I respectfully request that this current board table this motion and permit the newly elected board and actual resident input to decide whether to go forward with this project and million-dollar spending.
We have 30 seconds remaining.
Please take into consideration the desires of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. John Walters? John Walters?
My name is Jason.
Dan Fialco?
Dan Fialco. Jennifer pretty much said it all for the second half of what I had to say. But I would like to sincerely thank Carlo, Barack, and Keith for their many hours, days, months, and years of selfless service to the Village of Homer Glen. Thank you, gentlemen.
Bruce Lahoff?
Yeah.
Dave Buckley?
So I'm Dave Buckley. I live at 13600 Pheasant Circle. I live on Long Run. My property backs up to the Will-Cook County border. We did have the fire. I was heavily involved, and so was all of the fire departments. I believe we had 14 different companies come out there. And just what I'd like to say is that the village board and the safety committee has done a terrific job. We've got two different issues out here, though, when we, when we talk about this. Initially, the safety board came up with cleaning out the creek and different fundings for that mechanism, which was fantastic. We'd been looking for something like that. And I think that as a, as a community and nature in harmony here, we have to protect this natural resource. The Long Run Valley down there is kind of the lungs and the breath of what goes on in the community and in the village as it leaves our watershed. I happen to be a civil engineer. I know a lot about these things. And I'd like to commend Brock for, for doing a hell of a job, coming out there and taking a look. The second-fold issue, though, is a fire that happens where it affects your property to the point where you got to look at your nine-year-old daughter and tell her that your property's not going to burn down, your house is going to burn down. And the fire departments all came out, and they did their job. But now we need to keep this momentum forward. And we're all doing a great job. The mayor came out, and we've got a great article in the paper now. But the impact that it's left, and I don't want to lose this momentum with this new board. I don't want to see our $50,000 being taken away because we think that, you know, that's improper spending of money. That money should be used, and a program should be developed for our whole village. And that's something that we talked about and we all agreed on through the Safety Committee, that, you know, we need to take care of this and take care of our natural resources. So we can talk about business and building a cul-de-sac and all this stuff. It doesn't matter. All good things come from the earth. If we don't take care of this, you know, I'm going to have to tell my kids that, you know, nobody really cares about where the water goes. So I don't want to see anything like that happen.
30 seconds.
And I'd really like to commend the staff for helping out, the engineering services, and our involvement has been gaining steam, and I just don't want to see that disappear. That's kind of where I'm at.
Hi, everybody. I just, I actually, Jennifer pretty much said it all. I was just hoping that that issue with the cul-de-sac parking would be tabled for a little while. The Long Run Creek thing going on, that's what, we don't even live over there. We are all concerned with the fires, and I would much rather see everybody's money right now going to helping them than worried about, like, other things that we could put aside right now. So I just am here to say, you know, as a resident, I am glad that you guys are giving the money and, you know, what we have to give to help the residents in Long Run Creek, and maybe we can just table everything else that's not so important right now, because there's other things going on where they need the money. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for public comment. Next would be, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the Village Board and will be enacted by one motion. Is there a motion to approve the following items? One, the accounts payable for the period of March 26, 2021, through April 15, 2021 in the amount of $130,742.56. Two, motion to recommend approval of the village's February legal bills from Mahoney Silverman and Cross LLC in the amount of $8,826.25. Three, motion to recommend approval of payment to Tria Architecture's invoices, number 3619 and number 3620, for Heritage Park Design Services in the amount of $5,712.37. Is there a motion?
I so move.
Trustee Suisse?
I'll second.
Trustee Backle? Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
And Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next would be legislation and action items. Is there a motion to approve the attached proclamation declaring April 30, 2021 as Arbor Day in the Village of Homer Glen? And we will have Trustee Suisse read the proclamation.
Need a motion, please? I so move. We have to vote?
Well, we have to approve it, and then we can vote afterwards.
But we still need a motion to read it, don't we?
All right, so who's going to make the, well, I figured you would make a motion.
Yes.
Second.
I so move.
And, okay, so. Trustee Suisse and Trustee Pazmino.
Okay. A proclamation declaring April 30, 2021, as Arbor Day in the Village of Homer Glen. In 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. The holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lowering our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Trees in our village increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, Mayor George Yucich will hereby proclaim April 30, 2021, as Arbor Day in the Village of Homer Glen, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and to plant and care for trees to promote the well-being of this in future generations.
Thank you, Trustee Suisse. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Who? Me?
Yes.
Aye.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Next, is there a motion to approve the appointment of Trustee Beth Rogers as Mayor Pro Tem? It is understood that the Mayor Pro Tem appointment is for one year. So.
I'll second.
Trustee Gray, Trustee Backle, discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Abstained.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
And Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 21-018, an ordinance approving, one, rezoning the subject property from C-3 General Business District to I Point 1 Industrial, and two, a special use permit to allow maintenance and storage of truck, tractors, and trailers for a certain real property located at 151st 15761 South Anaco Drive, Units A and B, Homer Glen, Illinois, subject to the following conditions?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I just want to state for the record, Mayor, that we are on J-3. You are now on J-4.
How did I miss that? I don't mind.
Okay, we can proceed with J-4 and then go to J-3.
It says this is four on this one, so, all right. Motion for consideration, is there a motion to approve the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Homer Glen and the Homer Township Road District for the performance and landscaping maintenance and other services to 159th Street and to the adjoining intersections?
I so move.
Trustee Suisse?
Second.
Trustee Gray? No discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
All right. The proposed outdoor storage is limited to truck, tractors, trailers only. No truck idling is permitted on the subject property. The arboritos must be planted at six-foot high. The Planning Commission approves a proposed eight-foot-high fence. This is under case number HG2108AS. So we've done a motion, because this is all screwed up now. I'm out of whack.
You're still in order, but.
Well.
But I do, who's making the motion, I guess?
Yes, the motion's already made, so now it's just a vote on it. Seconded?
There was no motion.
There was no motion, maybe.
There was no motion.
We made the motion on J-3, not J-4.
Okay. All right, who's going to make the?
I'll so motion.
I'll second.
Okay, now, any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, are you on number five on your page?
I am.
Okay, so am I. Approval of the addendum, is there a motion to approve addendum number one for construction engineering for the 2019 Drainage Improvement Program in the not-to-exceed amount of $18,048?
Mayor, I'd like to motion to table this. I apologize for the last minute on this, but I just realized that we never did get the draft A and F minutes when we discussed this, and we brought up a lot of different points at that meeting about, actually about this one, J-5 and J-6, so I'd like to move to table J-5.
And J, do you want to move J-6, too?
If we can do them together, or should we do them separately?
Do separately.
Okay, I'd like to move to just table J-5 for right now.
Need a motion?
I'll second that. You know, there was a lot of discussion at A and F, and I think we were waiting on some follow-up information, which I'm not saying that I need that prior to it coming back to the board, but I would like for the board to read the discussion that went on at A and F relative to these two bills.
Okay, so we're going to approve?
Give you a second?
Beth, second.
Okay, so call the roll, please.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
And Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Okay. Number six. Is there, do you want to table number six in?
I would. Do you want to read it, or do you not have to?
You can either motion and table it, or you can move it, not have a second, or nobody moves to do anything.
Do we need him to read the motion first, or no?
I think you can read the motion to see if there's.
Is there any interest?
For the record. If anybody wants to move, you can do that and then move to table it, or it can fail without a motion at this point in time.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve addendum number two for 151st Street Widening Project between Cedar Road and Bell Road in the amount of $25,897.84?
Mayor, I'd like to move to table this until we get the draft minutes from the A and F committee meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
And Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Motion, and we'll bring it back. Next, approval of the lowest bid proposal from Lyons Pinner Electric for streetlight maintenance within the Village of Homer Glen. Is there a motion to approve accepting the lowest public bid proposal from Lyons Pinner Electric for streetlight maintenance within the Village of Homer Glen in the amount of $34,860 per year for a three-year term? It is understood that this amount equates to $3.97 per unit cost per month for a total of 745 streetlights currently owned and maintained by the village. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Trustee Suisse?
I'll second.
Trustee Backle, discussion?
I guess I have a question here. Pinner Electric was at $34,860. H&amp;H was at 30, well, we'll call it $39,000, but MEED was at $46,000. Do we know why there was such a discrepancy between MEED and the other two? Because $38,000, $39,000, and $35,000, you know, that's a decent amount, but nowhere near what MEED was, was, did they give any explanation?
No.
They want to make more money.
Yeah.
And need the work.
Pinner's been doing this for a long time, and they've done a very good job with it.
Yes.
So I think that they just liked it, and they wanted to keep the job.
Yeah.
So they were $10,000 to $20,000 cheaper than everybody else.
And they know the system, so it's easy for them. There might have been a larger learning curve for MEED.
That was going to be my next question, because they've done it. They're familiar with it. It only made sense that they could cut costs because there was no learning curve, and any adjustments had already been built in with them, so that makes sense.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Caprio? Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, approving the proposal from TKB Associates for Laserfish Government Document Management Software for the Village of Homer Glen. Is there a motion to approve accepting the Laserfish proposal dated March 22, 2021 for the sum total of $17,292.50 for the first year and the renewal rate of $13,420 for each subsequent year following the first? Is there a motion?
I so move.
Trustee Suisse?
Second.
I'll second.
Trustee Backle? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next. Lease agreement with Peterson Properties for the village's EMA and cold storage at 15757 Anaco Drive, Unit Number 3, Homer Glen, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve a two-year lease agreement with Peterson Properties for 15757 Anaco Drive, Unit Number 3, Homer Glen, Illinois? It is understood the village will pay $2,540 per month from June 1, 2021, through May 31, 2022, and $2,620 a month from June 1, 2021, to May 31, 2023. Is there any, who's going to make a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, Trustee Rogers, Trustee Suisse, and discussion. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
So everyone knows right now, we're doing this because it's cheaper than trying to build a building. We're also trying to figure out where we're going to put it, if we do put it. So this way, we keep it within, a lot cheaper than buying it. All right, next would be lease agreement for Peterson Properties for extra storage for EMA, special events, parks equipment at 15757 Anaco Drive, Unit Number 4, Homer Glen, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve a two-year lease agreement with Peterson Properties at 15757 Anaco Drive, Unit Number 4, Homer Glen, Illinois? It is understood the village will pay $2,540 a month from June 1, 2021, through May 31, 2022, and $2,620 a month from June 1, 2022, and May 31, 2023, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Trustee Gray?
I'll second.
Trustee Suisse? Discussion?
I would just say that I think it's important that we make sure that we, in my world, we call it tickle it, tickle it for that termination, because they're, with us acquiring the highway department, there could be room for them to move into some of that property that we'll be getting with that. So I think it's important that we keep those dates on the radar so that we can terminate them if we find that there's room over there for them.
I agree. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
And Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, is there a motion to accept bid proposal from Austin Tyler Construction for the Heritage Park Cul-de-sac project in the amount of $1,087.281 for the base bid plus alternate one at $85,900 for a total of $1,173,181.37? It is understood that contract changes may be required to meet state requirements.
I so move.
Trustee Suisse?
I'll second.
Trustee Backle? Is there discussion?
Is Tria here?
Do you want to come up, please?
I would just say that, you know, this cul-de-sac has been on the master plan since, for over a year. The master plan was voted on and approved by all of the trustees. The decision to move forward with the plan was voted on by all of the trustees in 2020. It's my opinion that the cul-de-sac brings great value to the community. It allows for, most importantly, first responders to have access to that northeast corner of the park, both the police and the fire department, who have both been out there on numerous occasions for different issues. I also think that it's important that we have more parking so that the, people assume that the sled is, the hill is only used in the winter. It's used all year long, and I think it's important, and Christina, I would ask for you to speak to this, because I know you've experienced this. It's important for people who have kids who aren't as mobile as maybe some others to, that's a long walk. as maybe some others to, that's a long walk. You know, don't disregard that walk, it's a long walk. I feel like I'm a physically fit person, and it's a long walk. And if I'm trying to carry a three-year-old that far, it's difficult. And bringing a three-year-old there in, you know, three inches of snow is even more difficult. So I think it brings value to that. It also allows for those people who have been to some of the events that we have here, you've seen that our parking has been just, you know, to the max. We were maxed out, people were parking on the street. While I appreciate the offer for the Homer Township to allow for that path, that will definitely help for some of the events, especially the trunk-or-treat event, that will help for that. But it's a long walk for people who are, you know, that, to park over there and to try to get all the way over here for some of these events, it's just too much. To overblow the price is irresponsible. There is a grant out there for $700,000.
$750,000.
$750,000 that will cover over 50% of this cost. And I think it's something that is going to be very useful, it was always in the stage plan, this isn't a rabbit that was pulled out of our hat at the last minute, so to say something like that is, it's just misleading and misguiding. So I do think that it is something that, again, it was always planned, everybody here voted for it, to sit here and go, well, we're going to do nothing till a new board comes in is also irresponsible, that's not what the people elected us to do, to sit around for a month and a half and do nothing. So I think it'll be a great asset to the community.
Plus, it's going to help the seniors and anyone that has special needs kids. I mean, we just started a committee because we have a lot of these kids in our city, in our village, all around us. And I think it's wonderful that we've done what we're doing right now. We have some of our, well, our clerk and soon-to-be trustee, they have the same issues. And I think that they would appreciate that the village is trying to help them out as much as possible. Plus, like Trustee Rogers said, we got a grant for $750,000, and if we don't spend it, they can take it back from us. And it's been on the plate for a long time. Actually, I've got the, this is February 6 in 2020 that we talked about it, and it went back to 2015 or 2016 to where everyone said that it would be a good idea to open it up a little bit more, and it was, the entire board, no one backed out of it. So I think this is very important that we do put it in. We are still way under budget on everything. We do not plan on doing amphitheater, we do not plan on doing the veterans thing right now. Everything that we've done, we've made sure we timed it out to where everything falls in place and we don't have to worry about anything. We still basically are tax-free. I know the road district, we had added a little money to that, which was very small, I think it came out to $47 now rather than the 59. It couldn't go on a road district, and that's what the money is for, it's not for taxes here. But they said that it was on there, and unfortunately misinformation got out on that one saying that it's a property tax, it's not a property tax, it's a road district tax. They will not allow us to put anything on their tax bill that says that, because we didn't have it before. So I think this is something that's great for the village, I think most people that use Heritage Park understand exactly what we're doing, and as far as I'm concerned, I say we do it now, too.
Well, I think it's important that people understand that this is MFT funds, and this is, MFT funds can't be used for a splash pad, or this is what an MFT fund can be used for. So that needs to be taken into account as well.
Mayor, if I might, I'd like to, to what Trustee Rogers said, that it's been around at least since last year, this really has been around since, I'm looking at a map that has a January 27, 2017 date on it, so this would have been developed in 2016 as part of the original, original PRI contract, which was let in May of 2016. So this was from one of the open houses in early 2017. So to incoming trustee Consolino's comment about, you know, us taking any action that she will inherit, I'd just like to say, I inherited this. This cul-de-sac, and again, I'm looking at it, and this is available on the village's website, this is from 2017, and it went through Parks and Rec, and it went through Environment Committee and all of staff, it went through multiple open houses. So this cul-de-sac has been on the plans since, for four and a half years minimum. It's never been debated to this length, it was never considered some sort of albatross. You know, Trustee Suisse and I were speaking earlier today, and we were trying to remember why it wasn't put out there as part of the original build from, I think it was P.T. Farrell who did the Ring Road. To Trustee Suisse's recollection, I don't think I was on the board when that was let. But it was maybe one of those, let's hold off on the cul-de-sac portion of it, let's see how the park develops, let's see how people use the park. And so when we were talking, it kind of dawned on me that, you know, great advice, always sage advice, you know, we are not, you know, to say that, you know, $8 million, $12 million, $20 million has been spent, that would have been if everything had been done. And obviously, this has been done in phases, and there are certain phases that, you know, certain board members here will never see. But one thing about the Ring Road and the Active Core and the Sled Hill has borne out what we've all assumed, but like to Trustee Suisse's point, you know, let's wait for the data to come in. Heritage Park has been a huge success, Active Core, the Ring Road, all of the amenity, all of the events that have been planned out there. So it does make sense to continue on developing it. I hope that the future boards, not just the next one, but the future boards, you know, continuing on, will continue to make improvements to it. And I think this is a logical one. It's not just parking. I know that people concentrate on the parking portion of it, but what it is, is it's access to our park. That's what makes Heritage Park and the Active Core so successful, is the fact that you can come here and you're, you know you can get right into the heart of the property and you can engage with it. And this just continues on with that, I think. It lets people get closer to the action, closer to the water features, or the sled hill, or the paths that they want to get to. You know, while I might live close enough to walk or bike here, we are a big village, and somebody driving in from the, you know, southeast corner, or, you know, even out by Bruce and Gallagher, when they get here, yeah, they want to be able to make sure that it's not just 20 parking spots out in front of Village Hall as it was when this property was first acquired. So I think that all of that goes to why this park has been such a success, and why it is becoming what we had all hoped for in the beginning, predating me, but certainly I know I've been saying it all along, was that this will become the focal point of our community. When people think about where's something going on in Homer Glen, they'll think it's going on at Heritage Park. It won't be some, just, you know, a bunch of random places where we used to have things, we'd have tree lightings at 150 First and Bell with traffic whizin' by, and now we know we have a community center, a community heart, a community focal point. So that's why, again, because of the fact that this has been part of this concept for such a long time, and it makes sense to continue on improving a park that has been a success. So that's why it's my approval.
I'd like to say something, Mayor, I agree with you, Trustee Gray, because if you look at the park, even look at the plan that was out, it's been in effect for quite a few years. I mean, there's no way in the world you're going to be able to have some kids truck through snow halfway across that park, because by the time they get to the sled hill, if they're thinking about using the neighboring property as more parking, it's not going to work. You need, you know, you need, this is, and people are calling it a parking lot, it's not a parking lot, it's a continuation of the Ring Road. And I don't like concrete, but it makes sense to have more access for more people to get back into that quarter, and also what you said, Trustee Rogers, about emergency equipment and things like that. So it's not just about, I agree with, continuing on with the Ring Road.
I'd like to speak to the use of the park. I live right next to the park. I have people walking down the sidewalk in front of my house daily. It's almost a nonstop flow of kids that are, parents who are pushing toddlers on strollers that they can jog behind, to parents who are walking there or riding their bikes with their five-year-old grandkids, because that's what I do. And to say that it's not getting, that there's nothing there for younger families to use is really disingenuous. I am there almost every day, and I see kids with their grandparents, with their parents, teenagers, I mean, there's, when I was there for the sledding hill, I was looking through my phone trying to find the video I took, I had to park almost by the village hall and walk back, because the cars and trucks were parked three deep. And I took pictures and video of it, you could hear the screams of the children from my house, and that's what actually drove me to go over there and take a look. And it gets a lot of use. And I think that when I hear that there's nothing there, or there's very little there for families, I think that that's really not the case, I see it myself.
I agree.
And I do understand that, you know, you want, when you're looking at, I like to use analogies, when you're looking at this and you say, you know, we should, could be spending the money, you know, putting in a hair splash pad or whatever, and I do get it, this isn't, it's not sexy, you know, it's not something that, oh, this is great, but it is, it's necessary. It's like when you're building a house, you know, and you've got to pay for the lumber, and that stinks, because you don't get to see the lumber, you want to pay for the granite and the marble and the things that you're going to be able to see and touch and play, but it is, it's a necessary, it's necessary, and I do understand that it's not something you can, you know, something that you're going to, I guess, play on. And again, I'd like to use the analogy that I was talking to the village manager, it's like, you know, when you have to buy the lumber for your house, it's a cost and it stinks, because you don't see that lumber, it's hidden behind the drywall and everything else, but if I don't have the lumber, I don't have a house, and, you know, I'm going to be able to use it to the best of my ability, so that's all.
This project also, as Keith spoke to, this project's been through Parks and Rec, this was approved by Parks and Rec, this is not a project that was discussed behind closed doors. I mean, everybody got a chance to, this was no secret, you know, and this was done back in 2017, so.
The correct date that they did this on was September 4, 2020. I asked for a roll call on it because I wanted to know who was going to vote where, and it came out five As, you know, the Yeses, and it was Trustee Pazmino, Trustee Berrien, Trustee Gray, Trustee Suisse, and Trustee Rogers. No one voted against it, and no one abstained. One absent, Trustee holds. So everyone that's here right now is part of it, and I think it's a great part of this village. And I'm happy that they went along with it so this could be built. It's just something that, you know, the residents needed. We've got the money for it, we're not going in a hole anywhere. Like I said, we are extremely frugal about everything we do. There has been nothing that we have done in this village yet that we ran over, not one thing.
This came in under, correct? This came under?
The estimates were at 1.3 million, a range between 1.3 to 1.5 million, and again, we got very favorable bids at 1.1.
And it's going to cost, our end is probably close to $400,000. I think that's pretty good that that's all it is, and we're getting what we're getting.
The bids, the bid sheet I'm seeing here, deconstruction, 1.7 million, just to give you an idea, Austin Tyler came in at $1,087,000.
How many bid packets were picked up?
There were 20 bid packets picked up. It was a very favorable bidding period, there were a lot of people interested in doing this.
Sure.
So, I mean, we did our due diligence, we found, you know, we didn't necessarily have to take the cheapest, but Austin Tyler has done a bunch of things in the village, and they've done a very good job. So, you know.
I also think that, you know, if this is something you say, oh, well, let's hold up and see how we do on this, the price of fuel has gone through the roof already, which directly affects this project. And so to think that you're going to get it any cheaper, any lower at any other time is just unrealistic, and you're not going to have that grant.
So, is there any other discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, I do. I think in the beginning, as you did mention, yeah, there was a consensus or a vote, I can't remember which one it was, that, yeah, at the time it was a great idea, it was an ideal. But as you know, different times, different circumstances. And I think that, you know, the intention of many of the parties involved, not only us, but, you know, the residents, at the end of the day, they're the ones that call the shots, right? You know, they look at the moment in time we're at now, okay? I see, you know, everybody here had excellent points, you know, but I think it's more fair to say that, you know, everybody has their perspective. And, you know, back then, we didn't have the relationship that we're going to have in the future with the township, cooperation with land and different areas, and it's always better to have a different set of eyes. You know, to say one set of eyes, that's it, and, you know, the amount of time that we pass, but you never know, you know? And a little bit more time that passes, I don't think is going to kill anybody. But that's why I wanted to table it, because I thought with a new board, a fresh perspective, maybe they could add something more valuable, thought-wise, concept-wise, you know? That's where I stand with that, so.
We also have the $750,000 grant that they gave us to do this, and they don't necessarily have to leave it with us if we decided that's not what we're going to build. So why would I take a chance of losing something when I've got it in my hands?
I would also like to add that the mayor did attempt to reach out to the newly-elected trustees, and was only taken up by Mrs. Laha to sit down and discuss this week's agenda. None of them had any interest in coming in and giving any kind of feedback to it.
I think one day to discuss a project this big is not reasonable, to be honest, but, you know, at least you reached out.
Okay.
Mayor, I believe Trustee Rogers had asked me to attest to something, and if you don't mind with your permission, I would like to touch on that. So, Trustee Pazmino, you had mentioned that we have a new relationship with the new incoming board, and I 100% agree with you, I think that's great, and I'm very happy for that.
Madam Clerk, could you pull your mask on? We have in trouble here.
These big old hoops, I didn't know if it was going to get caught. And I think that's great, I do. But if you look at the map when it was originally designed, where that access point goes to, to the other end of the park, how would the new township board provide us access all the way to that end of the park, where the sled hill is, where there's other things that, I mean, I have two small children, as Beth had stated, and forget that one even has special needs and is very challenging to get him there himself, but any mother who is either a single mother or a mother bringing her children on her own, to park that far away to have to lug your child with all of their equipment that they need to get onto the sledding hill is very hard, it's very difficult to do. So unfortunately, I was unable to, and this isn't just about one resident, this is about many other residents who either have multiple children or special needs children, it's very difficult to get back there. So unfortunately, myself, I could not, I had no way to get back there this year, because bringing all of that with me was just too much for me to handle, and it was not easy, especially with the special needs son. So I do appreciate that the new incoming board is going to work with us on this park, and I think that's fantastic, but I just don't understand how they would provide access to that end of the park.
My point was just, it warrants the conversation.
And I agree 100%, but just so you know, speaking from a mother, it is very difficult to access all angles of the park without an extension to that area.
Noted, thank you.
Is there anything else? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino?
No.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
And?
Mayor Yucich?
Yes. Okay, motion carries.
Tria, I'm sorry, did you want to add anything? I'm sorry, I.
Yeah, we made you stand there for a while. You got to get steps in, not just standing. All right, next, proposal from Flock Safety for, okay, for 10 license plate cameras, solar power, wireless network, installation, poles, and cloud hosting. Is there a motion to recommend approval of a proposal from Flock Safety for 10 license plate cameras, solar power, wireless network, installation poles, and cloud hosting in the amount of $27,500 and the annual subscription of $25,000 starting in 2022?
Mayor, I would like to, I don't think the proper, I don't want to table it, what I'm saying is, I believe that this shouldn't, this needs to go through at the minimum public safety to get their opinion on it, and if, and then additionally possibly parks to get their opinion on it, it didn't go through any, anything, this kind of came out of nowhere, so I'd like for it, at the minimum, to go to public safety before, if it comes back here, at public safety, they may recommend it not to come back here, but I just don't, I don't even think that tabling it is right, because I don't want to say to bring it back, because.
think that tabling it is right because I don't want to say to bring it back because I don't know that it will be brought back.
Motion to refer to committee?
Yes, I would like a motion to refer to the public safety committee, and then at the public safeties, if they believe it needs to go to Parks, then it would go to the Parks.
Okay, no, I think that's very good.
A motion.
Okay, so we have a motion from Barack.
I'll second.
We have it from trustee Suisse. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
And trustee Backle?
Aye.
Motion carries. Amendment to the mayor and village board standard operating procedure number 002. Is there a motion to approve the amended mayor and village board standard operating procedure number 002?
Mayor, per our conversation earlier when we discussed the budget, I'd like to move to table this until our April 28 meeting.
Do we have a second? Okay, trustee Rogers. So, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Motion carries. Proposed discretionary general fund transfer as April 30, 2021, per standard operating procedure number two. Is there a motion to recommend approval of the finance director's recommendation to initiate the proposed general fund transfer equal to general fund surplus for fiscal year 2021 on April 30, 2021, in accordance with the standard operating procedure number two?
Do we need to table this one, attorney?
It seems that if you are tabling-
The first.
The other two, should we be doing this one?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this per our discussion earlier about the budget and SOP 02 until our April 28 meeting.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Trustee Backle? Okay, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Is there any old business?
Yes, I was wondering if, Matt, you could, I was anticipating seeing Marion Village on this agenda, and I was just wondering if you could give us an update on that and let me know if there's anything you need from me to help.
Sure, at the meeting, Marion Village had, they want to go in front of their board for approval first because they were concerned about their residents getting their hopes up for the project. So the plan is for them to come back in the May 26 meeting, once they have approval from their Marion Village Board of Directors, and come back with us so that they can have that open house.
So there's nothing on our end that's holding them up?
No, no, the ball's in their court, they're going to have their, they're going to get their approval, then have their open house, and then come back with the results of that for us.
And she said she would let us know.
And I know that you and I discussed briefly maybe having our IT people go over there and make sure that Marion Village residents are familiar with Channel 6 so that when this does come to the board, they know where to find it and, you know, where, how to use the Channel 6, and especially now that you can DVR it and schedule it. So if you could just make sure that that happens, and if you need my help with any of that, let me know.
Will do, absolutely.
Okay, is there any new business? We're going to go into executive session for discussion on personnel, litigation, and real estate purchases. We're not going to, I don't think we're going to have anything to report on.
No, I don't know.
We're not voting on anything. All right, so we can let them know that-
Let them know no other business is going to be after?
Yeah.
We're just-
Just for your information, there's not going to be any more information on it because we're not voting on anything. Thank you.
Mayor, do we need a motion to go into executive session?
Motion. Yeah, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, you want to have a few minutes?
Yeah.